Teresa, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? I'm getting feedback because I have the speaker in my room.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Introduce ourselves.
Hi, Bridget Dory, Communications.
Leslie Herbie, interim clerk.
Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Thank you all so much. Stephanie Sumrodomas, President of the Commission Board. We will move forward, as we often do, with silent prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. And I will bring that up in a minute, but if you could just take a moment for a sonic prayer, not only for those in Ukraine, but really all over the world that are being impacted by negative atrocities. So, thank you. Amen. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Sumrodomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is presentations, and we'll get started. I want to talk about, you know, I've heard that silence is golden, which basically means if you stay quiet, people don't know what you're thinking. Last week, I asked twice, actually, on Tuesday, we usually don't conduct a silent prayer, but I asked last week if we could just do a prayer for those in Ukraine, which we did. I've also read that in the end, you don't remember the words of your enemies, but the silence of your friends. So we thought as a board, it was time for us to not just talk about the atrocities that are going on in Ukraine, but to be about it and to have a proclamation that indicates that. We will also have a flag, a blue and yellow flag, representing Ukraine at the courthouse that will be flying today. I don't know if it's up yet, but the board decided we wanted to do that. We're going to have lights on the courthouse. Are we also having the flag or just the lights?
I didn't know about the flag.
Okay, okay, thank you. So just drive around and look forward. So I looked for the Ukrainian Greater Cincinnati and Dayton organizations. So after we complete this proclamation, that we could possibly give the proclamation to them. But then I was told by my Chief of Staff, there's a small business in Springdale that's Ukrainian, and I'm going to hand deliver that proclamation to them if it's okay with you guys. So I'll move forward with the proclamation. Whereas Ukraine has been an independent nation since 1991, proclaiming its independence on August 24, 1991, following the collapse of the Union of Soviet Socialist Republic, the USSR. And whereas Ukraine is the second largest country by area in Europe and is home to 44 million citizens. And whereas on February the 24th, 2022, the Russian Federation launched an invasion of Ukraine, which numerous stakeholders in the international community have condemned, including the United States, United Nations, and the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, NATO.
Whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights declares, "All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and they have the right to live in peace." And whereas the number of civilian and military casualties and wounded grows as the invasion continues. Whereas we denounce the killing of innocent men, women, and children in Ukraine.
And whereas, Hamilton County stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. And whereas, we acknowledge, appreciate, and stand with Ukrainian Americans living in Hamilton County and extend our heartfelt thoughts and prayers to them. And whereas, the leadership of the Russian Federation has engaged in a direct violation of human rights, and the Board of County Commissioners joins countless others in wishing for a swift end to the senseless violence and needless loss of life.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners stands with the people of Ukraine in their fight for freedom and commends those who have answered the call to defend their rights against an unjustified attack. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners does hereby declare on this third day of March 202022 that Hamilton County stands in unity with the Ukrainian people, and it's signed by all the Commissioners. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge that, yeah, I'm grateful that we have done this resolution. I had a friend of mine, actually, lives in Hamilton County, and his parents live in Ukraine, and they have not been able to get out of the Ukraine. And so it is, you know, it is real for many people that live in this community, and so I'm grateful that we have weighed in. And I do want to thank my staff member, Chris Harding, for helping to offer some language for the proclamation that was read. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to thank you, Madam President, for the proclamation. And also Commissioner Treehouse, when she talks about people who are still stuck there. My brother's a coach and knows several players. Some of you may have seen the stories of the folks that are playing professionally over their basketball. They were told, some of them were told that it wasn't that bad, stick around. And I think people don't realize that, like, we have the free press here, and we're able to get news. Everyone doesn't have that luxury around the world. And some of them are stuck there and have started GoFundMe pages. They had to make a decision. If they were to leave there, they're told that they cannot play basketball anywhere in the world again. So it was, do they keep a career to try to take care of their family, or do they try to get out? And so, you know, I just want to tell, so for everyone, keep prayer, but also those are the types of stories that are going on when people say, why didn't they get out? There are some people that had to make that choice, and there's some that are still stuck there. They're tweeting now, and their families are tweeting some of these horrific stories. So thank you for this proclamation as we stand in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. We'll move forward with public comments. Mark Cato is here. Welcome.
Thank you. I try to be brief. I know I was long-winded last time. So from December 2020 to December 2021, 150 employees at Hamilton County Department of Job and Family Services have left the agency. 150. That's one quarter of the workforce, one out of every four workers over the last year. The Hamilton County public has noticed. Their wait time on calls for assistance is longer. The time that children's service workers can spend with families is shorter. The stress on the workers themselves is mounting and only getting worse for those who have stayed. They are continuing to leave. And here we are, the union who represents these workers. We're asking for the county administration to recognize these workers with a fair amount of hero pay. And here, your administration is refusing to do the right thing still. They still have not received hero pay. At the same time, we hear $1,000 per worker is too much for JFS. We know Sheriff McGuffey said that is what we are going to give the sheriffs. We know that the Clerk of Courts gave that plus $1 to $2 an hour. We know that Cincinnati Public School worker, support workers, who worked from home almost the majority of the time, received $2,000 each. No one tried to divide their workforce. I want to say this with respect, because I respect all of you, and I mean that. I've fought hard for all of you who sit here right now. Hamilton County Department of Job and Family Service workers deserve more, much, much more than we are asking for. But we are not going to stop until we get there for what we're asking for now, no matter what it takes. These workers all deserve it. Finally, in the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. Thank you.
And can you tell everyone who's listening, your role, I know your name.
My name's Mark Cato. I'm the staff representative for AFSCME Ohio Council 8 and Local 1768 workers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Michelle Heist. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm the Chief Union Steward for Hamilton County Job and Family Services. So greetings, and thank you for having me again. First, I want to give a shout out to the JFS frontline workers who are on the phones. They're seeing clients right now. They're supervising home visits. They're attending court, delivering mail, working the front desk, and processing cases, among many other duties. So you're listening? I know you are. Please keep it up and continue to do the best that you can, because you're asking, you're being asked to make a dollar out of 15 cents, which don't make sense. Somebody gonna catch that at home. I'm here to discuss a few items. One, as Mark mentioned, the employee turnover rate at JFS is continuing to increase. Even new employees are starting and leaving. Employees are taking on more and more work. And of course, staff shortages and delays will cause delays in services to the community. So I also want to say to the community who is listening, please continue to be patient with our frontline workers. We know that you are trying to get those services. We know that you are waiting to receive services, and you're waiting for recertifications, and you're waiting for many things. So we just ask that you would continue to be patient with our frontline workers. As you all know, JFS is one of the largest departments within Hamilton County. And if all of the employees, if you were to remove all of the employees, this department, department employees from Hamilton County, do you know what you would also remove? The majority of the minority. You would remove women, Black and Brown folks, and other various minority groups. Do you know that historically speaking, if the makeup of this board were non-existent, what you would remove? Women, minority, and other people groups. So it's funny how we're coming out of Black History Month, and we're entering into Women's History Month. And those are longstanding, longstanding historic disparities for women and Black people. And I cannot help but think that JFS has a disparity link in the thread somewhere. Commissioner Dumas, you stated a few weeks ago that Hamilton County's employees received hazard pay. Well, that's not true for the JFS bargaining unit staff. So let me share this with you. The hazard pay is very important to these workers. As Mark said, they're not going to stop fighting. So I guess JFS can quit hoping that we're going to take what's at the table, because we have more in store. We're not going to stop fighting. We know that we're worth more, and we're going to keep fighting for more. The employer tried to dangle some low-hanging fruit before two significant holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas. The workers saw right through that strategy. Shame on the employer and whomever thought that this strategy was cool and was going to work out. It was really disrespectful and expresses just how low the view is of frontline workers. Here's what's difficult to comprehend for these workers. Hamilton County received somewhere in the ballpark of $158.8 million of American Rescue Plan funds. And the last time I viewed the plan, only $3 million was designated to premium pay or hazard pay. So 158.8 minus three equals $155.8 million. So I guess the rescue plan didn't include rescuing the workers. There are enough funds for JFS bargaining unit staff to receive $1,000, $1,000 each that are within the guidelines of the ARC. The employer lied to the workers and agreed to come back to the table, concluding negotiations to bargain with the union for hazard pay. That did not happen. The workers are being forced to take this money. So everyone can keep scratching their heads, wondering why the turnover rate is so high. Or people can wake up and smell the coffee and become alert. So I want to close with this. There's a story in the Bible, and if you've read the Bible, you might know this story, but I encourage you to check it out. It comes from Exodus 16, and it's the story about how God provides manna to the people, the Israelites, as they're coming out of Egypt. And so as they're coming out of Egypt, they're complaining, like, we want meat. We should have stayed in Egypt. We should have stayed there, but now we have this. We have less. We have less. He said, okay, I'll provide for you. He listened to the groaning. He listened to the moaning. He said, but I just have some instructions that I want to see if you'll follow. You go out, you pick what you need for that day, and I will provide everything. But I need you to remember one thing. Don't hoard it. Don't keep it, because I will provide. But they didn't listen. They kept hoarding, and they kept providing. What happened? It spoiled. So this is a piece of wisdom, a warning, and some instruction. There is enough money. Please don't let what you have be spoiled. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that there are discussions going on with administration, HR, and also the union. And everyone at JFS is not in the union, so some receive some hazard pay, others didn't. And so hopefully, we can keep the discussion open. And I would just urge whoever's listening to whatever comments that came forth, there's always two sides of the story. And so do your own investigation as it relates to the status of those discussions. So I'll leave it at that. So thank you so much for your comments. We have Chris HGOK. Oh, like a doctor. Okay, welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Heckman, Cincinnati resident, volunteer with a group called Citizens Climate Lobby, which is a national, nonpartisan grassroots organization, trying to build political will for ambitious climate actions, and specifically, carbon pricing nationally. And I'm looking to the Hamilton County Commissioners to consider a resolution in support of a bill that's in Congress now. It's the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. It's HR 2307. Currently has 95 co-sponsors in the House, so it's pretty popular. And we, as a group, meet with members of Congress regularly, and we're trying to get our local members to support such a resolution. Steve Shabbitt used to be a Commissioner here, so I think that would send a message. So what does the Energy Innovation Act do? So it would put us on a path to net zero carbon emissions by 2050, which is pretty impressive for a single bill. Right now, fossil fuels, the price of fossil fuels is not included, but damage that it's causing to the earth and communities. The public picks up the tab for a lot of that, and I'm sure that a lot of people would buy solar panels, electric vehicles, all those things if they had money to do it, and that's what this plan does. The money that is increased in the cost goes back to households, 100% of the revenue. And I've got details that I'm happy to share with you all. And I just wanted to share, too, that it's been reintroduced in the House a couple of times. In 2019, the city of Cincinnati supported or passed a resolution in support of this, and the Archdiocese of Cincinnati has also supported it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. And if you could please send that information to our Clerk of the Board, and also you probably have a template as it relates to HR 2307, so we can take a look at it. So thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Okay. Well, is there anyone on, okay, no one on Zoom. We'll move forward with comments from the Commissioners. I have just a few comments. Let's see. I did meet with the legislators on last Friday, our State Capitol Task Force meeting, our final meeting to make recommendations for capital improvements in all different areas here in Hamilton County. So we did have our final meeting, and all of the legislators, the majority of them that represent this area, were there to hear what our recommendations were. I thought it went very well. So you'll be hearing publicly, I'm sure. We're going to submit to them, and then they decide whether or not they agree. So I also, on Saturday, we went out to meet with the youth who, through our Kansas City wager, that they lost. They did send the barbecue, and we did meet with the youth. A nice group of young men came forth, and we fed them and talked to them and tried to encourage them. So it was just a great experience, and they were extremely appreciative. And then we had jerseys that were donated for all of them. So just a great time. And then on Sunday, I was on a webinar at 4 o'clock with a student activist as it deals with climate change. They're from like, oh, let me see, there are like six universities that are involved, and they have an activist group. The discussion was so refreshing. They just have so much energy. And so they were just talking about what they do at Miami University, what they do at UC, what activities they have at Xavier. So just a real refreshing, exciting day. We need to include more youth, more young people, young adults in our decision-making process, no matter what it is, because they come up with things that you might not necessarily think about. So great experience. I met with Doug Mooreman and Josh Gutman from Cable Academy on a webinar, and they talked about what their academy does. That's a great organization also. Learned a lot. Then, of course, I'm sure Commissioner Treehouse will talk more about the Women's History Month photo that we did out there. I'll leave that for her. And then we had a Records Commission meeting yesterday. We'll meet again in September. And then I had a webinar with Joe Huber and Robbie Sucks to talk about the Cincinnati Development Fund and how they differ somewhat with Port Authority and HCDC, which is ALLOY now, and that they're different, but they work together with them. So that was some of the things that I did this past week. I will open it up for Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Yes, so I know Commissioner Treehouse will speak on Women's History Month, the photo that we participated in. And also, I was very happy to participate in a Cincinnati Magazine Women's History program. And there'll be a number of women history events this month, and I know all of us will individually or collectively participate in as we continue to make history as all women elected a board in the things that we're doing and opening doors for others as we move forward. So excited about that. Want to also say I did attend the retirement of Dr. Rick Lofgren. Dr. Lofgren, I really hate to see him go. From UC Health, was a very good partner. And a lot of times, when a lot of CEOs come in that space, they may stay in the medical realm and not necessarily be in the community realm. And from day one, he was in the community and really connected the community with UC Health. And he was also a very good partner, very good partner when the idea of the, what is now known as the 513 relief bus, he said, count us in. And actually, we partnered with them, and the bus that you saw, I call it the body double, because the bus that, the real bus, if you will, is being built. But he allowed us to have the body double and partner with them, brought the nurses out, those kind of things in his staff. But it had to come from the top, and he said, let's do it. And of course, he's participated and played a leadership role as we brought together so many entities to deal with COVID. So I just wanted to say that. I think that's a big loss. And we got two losses at the same time, because Children's Hospital, we had Michael Fisher. Everybody knew Michael Fisher. He was connected to the community. And Dr. Rick Lofgren from UC Health was connected to the community. So I look forward to the new people, but they also have some big shoes to fill. In addition, had a meeting about Build Back Better. We hear a lot about that that is waiting to be passed. But wanted to know what's in it. How could it potentially help the citizens of Hamilton County? We know about the Brent Spence Bridge, but there's other items in there, and I wanted to know what are the other items? What are the other funding mechanisms? Because one of the focuses that I have, and I think will be helpful to us, is how do we bring in more outside dollars? We get our, we sent a lot of money to the state. How do we get our fair share back? We send money to Washington, get our fair share back, so we can reduce the cost on the local citizens who live in Hamilton County. So I wanted to know more about, the Brent Spence Bridge is very important. I support it, and we've got to get it done. But what else is in there that we may not, may not make the news clips? Of course, it's buried in a large packet that might be unique to some of the priorities that our board has put forward. And how can we compete for those dollars if this were to pass? So that was very informative and learned a lot. The other thing is, we have the State of the Union, the President of the United States, Joe Biden. And there were a lot of things he talked about. But one of the things that may not get as much press, but I thought was critically important, and I wanted to let our board know something that I really would like to work on, and I am working on, and would like to bring something forward at the appropriate time, talked about uniting to fight cancer. And I was very happy. We had our Breast Cancer Awareness Day here, and it was great. It was packed. But we've got way too many people dying of cancer. And looking at, we saw with COVID, that if you put your mind together, they can hurry up, and they found at least a shot, a couple shots we could take. But cancer, we've been, you know, claimed, we're looking and looking and looking, and we're not getting there. Children and senior citizens and men and women, no matter what your race is, no matter what your party affiliation is, we all are being affected by this. And so he had mentioned about having an initiative as it relates to cancer, looking at cutting the death rate from cancer, looking at developing something, a vaccine that can help us be able to live through this terrible disease so that we don't have people going into the grave. And he talked about more money, hard dollars on research with stepped-up timing of getting to results. And he talked about the goal, of course, is to cut that number. With all of the brain power that we have here, I want to make sure that we are organized and we're stepped up. And I'm looking at a cancer commission or caucus, if you will, that will bring together all of our folks here so that we could tap into those dollars for research, clinical trials, and also cultural competency, clinical trials. And have a goal for our county to cut that number. So I just wanted to point that out. That was something that struck me and something that I look forward to working with the board and bringing something back, because I think this is something that we need and could really put us in having more people live versus people that are dying from this cancer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I am going to mention the Women's History Month celebration that we had on the courthouse steps. Thanks to Mary Mountie, who is the Program Coordinator for the Commission on Women and Girls. She organized that, reached out to women elected, and there are over 100 elected women in this county, whether it's a township trustee, or a village mayor, or a council member, or county commissioner. We are well represented throughout the county. And so we wanted to celebrate that as we kicked off Women's History Month. And so Mary helped organize it. We had lots of women come down and participate. Thank you both for attending. I think it was good fun and I think we're going to have to do that every year. And, and, and we didn't miss it. The, the email went out and I think we missed a couple women on the list. And so I heard about that. And so we're going to have to do it again next year so that they can participate in the future. But again, I thought it was a nice celebration of what we're trying to do, which is, you know, build women into leadership roles in this community and make sure women see public service as an option for them as they think about career choices. I also went to the Dr. Lofgren event. I, I agree that, you know, Dr. Lofgren was not only involved with the 513 relief bus. He was so helpful as we tried to navigate our way through COVID. And, and something that was new to all of us, he was the expert both in Columbus and in Hamilton County and represented us on the Governor's Commission and attended many, many of the briefings where we were trying to make sure people had accurate information and information that was medically correct and relevant. So he's going to Oklahoma, huge loss for this community, but great for him and his family. So thank you to Dr. Lofgren. And then the one other thing, I represented the commission at an opening of a business. It's called Resolve. It's in Walnut Hills, near Cream and Sugar on Reading Road. And they used to be in Kentucky and they've moved to Hamilton County. And so they renovated a fire, an old firehouse and it's spectacular. They saved the pole that they firefighters used to slide down. They saved all the lockers. I mean, it's spectacular. And Resolve is, they do a lot of video, videography kind of stuff. They, they work in many, many places throughout the county, including Hamilton County. And so they asked me to come out and I was happy to do a proclamation welcoming them to Hamilton County and welcoming all their employees to Hamilton County. And then lastly, I just want to note that Bockfest is starting tomorrow. I don't know how many people go to Bockfest, but it's one of my favorite holidays in, in Cincinnati. And so it will be throughout many of the drinking establishments and over the Rhine. And it's just a celebration of some of the, the culture around Bockfest. And, you know, it's part of the community really loves this stuff. So anyways, just a reminder to anybody that would like to join, I will be down there celebrating all things Bockfest. Thank you.
Thank you. As Commissioner Reese was bringing up about President Biden's speech, you reminded me about, I always, every Friday, have a briefing from the White House. And so if anything comes up that would be relative to us and what we can do and any new innovations are, I'll be sure to bring it forward. Okay. In addition, I'll save that for later. Jeff Faludo, our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one by leave in your packet today from the administration. This is a by leave number one. This relates to the potential to refund or refinance bonds from MSD, approximately 126 million in bonds that were issued back in 2013. The traditional tax exempt savings refunding or tax exempt refunding date for these bonds would be in 2023. But we feel that moving now will eliminate some of the risks that we currently face with rising interest rates and the ability to have those savings eroded. So John Brugan is here, can provide a little bit more information on the type of structure. This is a little bit different than the typical type of public offering we do. It's, we're recommending moving through a direct placement. So John, can you give some information on that, the potential savings, John, if you could touch on that? And I know Brad Rui, our bond counsel, is also on the, the Zoom call today and can fill in if there are any questions as well. We acknowledge that we're coming forward with this as a by leave. Typically, we would have this on the regular agenda. But again, with timing being of the essence, with interest rates starting to rise, every day we, we wait, we risk losing some of the savings associated with this. So John?
That's correct. And typically, whenever we're looking at a financing, as much as we can, or refinancing, as much as we can, we wait until that call date to maximize our savings. But we're in an environment where we fully expect to see substantial increases in interest rates between now and September of 2023, when these bonds would be callable. So we've worked very closely with our bond team and are recommending moving forward with an advance refinancing at this time, or it's called a forward refinancing. It's a direct placement with the bank. It's, it's actually a taxable loan that converts into a tax exempt loan at the call date in September of 2023. We think it's a good, a good option for us. We're estimating today about 13.95% of savings off of the existing bonds, or about $17.6 million. Those numbers are all very volatile in this current increasing interest rate environment. So those could still change within the next couple of weeks. But this is something that will move very quickly. So we'll be looking to close this, this transaction within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you so much. I've had my questions answered. I've talked to Jeff about this. So I, I don't have any questions or comments. Vice President Reese?
Yes, thank you. Is this just the MSD?
It's just an MSD bonds, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I, I appreciate this. I mean, thank you for bringing this to our attention and having this by leave in front of us. I think it's important that we move on it. Are we looking at other, other funds, you know, other, where, where we're bonding out to do the same kind of thing?
Yes. Yes, we all, we keep an eye on refinancings all the time. So this is the one that seems ripe. We have another set of MSDs in 2024, but they're not, the numbers don't seem to work on that. It makes more sense to wait now.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, no further questions. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you, commissioners. And thank you to Brad Rui, who is on the phone with us today. But no further by leaves, Madam President.
Thank you so much. We will move forward with our regular agenda items. Item number one, Todd Long is here.
Thank you, Madam President. Todd Long, Chief Deputy Engineer, representing Eric Beck today. I've got a resolution, item number one, before you, for submission for Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and Transportation Improvement, they call them SCIP and LTIP programs for round of 36 fiscal year 2023. We're proposing moving two projects forward for the anticipation of a grant award at some time next year. One in Anderson Township for the Clough Pike landslides and another one in Colrain Township for Sheed, Hanley, Weiss, and Gaines roads, all of which we're anticipating, the hope is that we will get a 50% match dollars for that from the OPWC grant program. So that will lessen the burden of direct funding out of Permissive Auto for the county. So we're seeking approval of that resolution today.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two is a resolution that's going to set the viewing and hearing dates for a vacation request for Willow Road in Sims Township. It was petitioned by Mr., or so, excuse me, Sir Joe Carey on the behalf of the Knights of the Golden Trail the end of last year. It would be setting the viewing date of March 23rd, 2022, and the hearing date of the end of the month on the 31st, March 31st, 2022. This is unimproved fee right of way that the county has in the Board of County Commissioners' name that they were looking for a hearing date and a viewing date, so.
Thank you. As you were saying, it came up last year. What was the issue? Because I think they rescinded their requests before or something was going on with this specific.
That's very astute. Yes, thank you for remembering that. The, the primary issue was a transactional issue in terms of the petitioner and the petition, the way that it was granted did not have the needed information. So the first go around, it had to be removed so it could be repetitioned so that the petitioner themselves could prepare and submit a survey plat and ultimately get the engineering report in place.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I make a motion to adopt item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number three is a, for Howard Road improvement between Lee's Creek at approximately the address of 10330, all the way to the Butler County line. It's project number 502016. This is a resolution to put this project out to bidding process. This is located in Harrison Township. The anticipated bid opening date of April 7th. The estimated completion of the project would be in the fall of 2022. The engineers estimate is $430,000 for the project. And we are, we have OPWC funding in the amount of $200,684. And we also have Southwest Water District participating in this as well for $22,450. And that leaves the balance of $204,866 coming out of the Hamilton County Permissive Auto Fund. So this is another example, I think, that we are going to be able to bring some local dollars.
Yeah.
It's matching dollar to our local dollars.
Okay. Good. We're leveraging our money as we always do. And that's what I tell Eric. And that's what you guys have been doing for years. Any other comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve item three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you so much. Okay, item four, MSD. So when is your last day?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll inform the board that Monday begins my 40th year of public service for the city of Cincinnati.
Wow.
I will be retiring after I conclude that in March or April 1st, 23, 2023.
Okay, very good. Well, lots of work. Congratulations. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not that we want you to leave.
I thought it was 2022. I thought it was coming soon. You've extended it, Jack. You just could, you would miss us, I think.
Yeah, okay. But anyway. We want you to stay.
Retired in tour.
Okay.
That's right.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, Commissioner Drehouse, I'm Jack Renecamp with Metropolitan Sewer District Division Manager in the Office of Director. With me today is Ryan Welsh, who is Deputy Director, Hamilton County Sanitary Engineer and MSD Chief Engineer. We have four items on your agenda for your consideration and hopefully your approval. Item number four is a request for construction funding for Humphrey Road Sewer Lateral Assessment, house number 9927. This project is located in Sims Township. This current request is for $46,000 for construction funding to build a sewer lateral and connect a private home, single-family residential home to the existing public sewer that is adjacent to this, this parcel. The cost of this, in part, is paid by the benefited property. In other words, the resident and the owner. And that part, that portion that they pay under MSD rules and regulations doesn't exceed $12,000. The Humphrey Road Sewer Lateral will benefit, as I indicated, one parcel and eliminates one household sewage treatment system. A May 2020 Hamilton County Public Health Inspection Report Orders Corrective Action Notice for this parcel indicates that it has an ability, or I'm sorry, an accessibility to an existing public sewer, as I indicated. The property owner of the parcel filed a petition with MSD that included a statement and waiver saying that they indeed want this, this sewer and will pay for this cost, this portion of the cost. Total cost of the project, as I indicated, is $46,000. And MSD costs, which are 74% based upon policy, are, is $34,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. So Jack, we usually see these related to like a street and a number of parcels, a number of residents who come together and request this kind of thing. And we've got a couple of these on here today where it seems as though just one parcel is being impacted. Can you help me better understand? You know, I, I understand, yeah, these are sewage systems that are not tied into the sewer, the MSD sewer system, but it is unusual for us to see one parcel at a time. So can you explain that?
MSD traditionally has handled it in both scenarios. So both what is called local sewers, which is indicative of multiple properties included in one larger project. That could be two, or it could be 152, as another project that will be coming forward in 2026 has that many parcels. However, also sewer laterals are available per rules and regs for property owners who are on HSTS, home sewage treatment systems to basically request MSD to connect them to an existing sewer. In some cases, the advantages of a multiple property project provides a lower cost. In other cases, there, we are not driving the project. We're facilitating the project. So we're not going to neighbors and saying, do you want to connect? Do you want to connect? So it's, it's done at the initiative of the individual property.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering what the distinction is there? If, if we had a neighborhood, perhaps, like, I don't know how isolated this property is, but if there were neighbors that also wanted to be connected because they've got the same issue with treatment systems that aren't connected to the MSD system, I'm just, I just don't know what the process is to reach out to them or how it varies from the process where an entire street has to weigh in regarding these connections.
Part of that process is driven, driven by Hamilton County Public Health. And so if they indicate to MSD and they indicate to the property owners, there are multiple parcels along the same street that have these similar types of situations, whether they're adjacent to the parcel and they can connect, but they haven't connected, or whether that situation plus a failed septic system is present. Typically, we take direction, we take information from them to, to decide how, how we're going to proceed with this. If we're going to bundle this in a larger effort, or it's just one property owner saying, I've received a notice and I want to take action.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So since the resident agreed, there was no easement cost, which reduced the cost. Is there still an easement cost or not?
I don't believe that there is an easement cost with this project. No.
There was not. Is that because they agreed and they didn't?
There may not be a need for an easement on this particular project because if the work is being performed within the right of way.
Okay.
And there would not be a need to, to cross the property line and get onto the property to do any specific work related to the construction.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Make a motion to adopt item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item, with your indulgence, I could skip to item six, which is also a sewer lateral assessment.
Sure.
Project, and then come back to items five and seven.
Okay.
So similar to item four, item five is for the Drake Road Sewer Lateral Assessment Project, house number 7255. Again, similar to Humphrey Road, Drake Road is a request from a property owner for connecting to an existing public sewer that is adjacent to their parcel. And again, per MSD rules and regulations, this is a, a cost to the property owner, the benefited parcel, property owner of no more than $12,000 for, for their costs for the public improvement. I didn't specify that earlier. The $12,000 does not include any private side costs to remove their existing HSTS or to make other connections to their existing plumbing. So the $12,000 is only for the public improvement cost. This project will benefit one parcel, eliminating one household sewage treatment system. A December 2017 Hamilton County Public Health Inspection Report Orders and Corrective Action Statement for this parcel notes that it has accessibility to an existing public sewer, as well as the HSTS was not approved as a result of an inspection test at that time, meaning that it was failing. The property owner filed a petition statement waiver with MSD and the MSD costs of this project are $43,700. The, the request is for $55,700 for construction of this particular project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I had one procedure question again. When you say per the rules of MSD, who makes those rules? Is that?
Your board.
Our board. Okay, per our rules.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thanks. I'm going to make sure.
Okay. Not to belabor the point, but it, I'm just asking a question. So if you've got a property whose system has failed and it's probably built around the same time the other properties in the neighborhood are built, and they probably have systems of about the same age, I just do wonder if there's an economy of scale here where you, unless these are very isolated, where you've got six houses on a street, all of which may be in a situation where their septic systems are going to fail soon, public health is going to go out there and say, you need to connect. systems are going to fail soon, public health is going to go out there and say, you need to connect, and it would be, I feel like, not a great way to do business to have us go out six different times to six different properties and go through this exercise instead of doing all six at the same time. So that was kind of the nut of my question earlier. Ryan, is there more information here related to these?
Yeah, I think I can probably add something of value, and I gathered that when I was sitting in the back, and you asked the first time that that might have been where you were going with it. The lateral projects, as opposed to the local sewers where we're doing half a dozen homes or, you know, up to a hundred homes or whatever, those typically can.
Ryan, can you?
Yeah, thank you.
Those often involve sewer expansion, so we're extending, not just constructing a lateral, which is just the service line that goes to the house, but we're often extending, you know, a twelve-inch sewer to serve all these homes. So it's a sewer expansion. These laterals occur when there's already a sewer going down the road and that it's within, so we're just putting in a service to the home. So while there is some economy of scale that if you went and said, well, this person next door across the street could also use sewer service, it's not that we're not really constructing new infrastructure except to serve that home. So yes, if we went and did four or five of them, it could be a little bit cheaper, but it's also not the same construction. So we're not really doing anything twice, or we're not building something that we, that doesn't accommodate that. The laterals are really just tapping into existing sewer that runs down the road.
Yeah, no, I understand what it's doing. It's just a matter of, you know, once you get the equipment out there, there, I mean, there's a cost to all of this, and the cost isn't, the homeowners pay a finite cost, as was mentioned, but MSD then would pick up the rest of the cost to go out there, you know, say, six times for six different properties. I'm just wondering if there is, I'm surprised that there's not a system in place to petition the other residents that may be in a similar situation or will be soon and say, hey, you know, would you guys be willing to get this work done now so that we've got some cost savings for MSD in the long run? I'm just suggesting that maybe we want to think about that as a, something, and evidently that's, and I know it's different than building out another sewer line or expanding a sewer line, I understand that, but still, the economies of scale seem so obvious here if other property owners want to do it. Maybe they don't, right? Maybe they are like, no, we're good, we're good. Well, and we wouldn't force anybody to do anything. But if there are four of the six that are, say, oh, you know what, this is something that's coming down, you know, the line for us too, let's do it all at the same time. Maybe that makes some sense. So I'm just offering that as maybe a way in the future to approach when a single property owner approaches MSD and says, hey, you know, I'd like to get this done, if maybe we think, look up and say, wait a minute, are there other properties that might benefit at the same time? That's all. I'm just suggesting.
That makes sense, and I think we can put together some statistics of, you know, what what our costs have been and and how we've done these.
Yeah, this is, for my vantage point, unusual, because I think we usually see the collective ones where we're going in and doing another, a major project and then tying folks into it. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
As you look at a policy as it relates to that, we always talk about the delay in projects. So as you try to gather everybody in that area to say yea or nay, look at the variables as it relates to timelines, whether or not that'll delay or some. Okay, so any other comments about item six?
One additional comment I wanted to make in addition to Ryan's statement is that your board can request sewers be installed at any time. It's just a matter of holding a public hearing for all those benefited parcels.
Great.
Which is different than what's occurring here.
Right, and and again, you know, these property owners may or may not want this, and I understand that. But if we've got failing sewer systems in an area that are all around the same age, it might make sense to at least reach out and petition them to see if there's any interest.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just, I'm just trying to understand all of the processes. And earlier you said it's your rules and regulations. Originally, you said MSD, which is city and county, but then you said it was us. So are you saying we need to make a rule or regulation for them, for there to be an outreach as Commissioner Drehouse is indicating, or is that something, I mean, does that have to be voted on? Or is that something you could take back and say, when you're going into these areas and there's more than one house, they are, there's an outreach and they can decide if they want to participate or not? Or are you saying we need to have, I hope we wouldn't have to vote on a rule for something like that?
Generically, the rules and regulations are recommended by MSD and they're approved by the board. However, if there are any changes to those, yes, indeed, there has to be a public hearing, and the board has to vote on any changes. However, in this situation, I think the first, the first step is to discuss this and find out what are the parameters and how far is the reach and desire to go, and then see if it's indeed necessary for any regulation to be changed in that regard.
That just sounds strange for me. She's, I can understand if we're mandating it, but to just say, can you outreach and see if anybody else is interested? You're saying that requires a full hearing, and you've got to have a full discussion and you have to have a vote?
I think we need to define what your parameters are first and then decide if there is any change that is necessary to accommodate that.
Well, let's just say, if you all could come back to us and respond to this idea that we do some outreach when we have a situation like this, I think that'd be helpful. Thanks.
I make a motion to adopt item six.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Switching back to item number five, this is a request, again, for construction of this project, which is a capital project. The Tusculum Avenue at Woodbridge Sewer Replacement. This project is located in the City of Cincinnati's Columbia Tusculum neighborhood. Their current request is to appropriate a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for construction with a total estimated project cost of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred. This project will replace an existing sewer that is nearing the end of its useful life. The sewer to be abandoned currently serves three single-family residences, and this sewer, these three family residences will be rerouted to a new sewer that will be installed with this project. The existing public sewer is located near beneath residential structures and has significant structural defects, including fractures, deformations, and partial blockages. Due to the extent of the structural defects, MSD is not able to line the sewer, which might be an alternative process to construction by replacing the sewer. The request is to appropriate the hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for construction.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion to adopt item five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. The last MSD item, item number seven, is for CSO one-twenty-five Stream Separation Phase B. This project was located in the City of Cincinnati's Northside Neighborhood. The current request is for an appropriation of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents for additional design right-of-way funding, and this is a consent decree project. Total estimated cost of this project is fourteen point three million dollars. The additional design funding request is needed for right-of-way project budget activity to pay for costs associated with property appropriation, and these include witness fees, legal fees, and interest. Happy to answer any questions.
So when we passed your CIP budget, our CIP budget, there's, there's no money in there now to do what we're saying needs to happen?
This project was not in the twenty-twenty-two MSD CIP, so one of the activities that are being requested, one of the pieces of legislation that are being requested is to amend the CIP to have this project be a part of that, so this cost can be not only appropriated but also paid. Because you're exactly right, we did not have this project enumerated in the CIP.
And so, just.
Yes, I was, Commissioner, I was just going to add, this project was actually constructed in twenty-nineteen. So it was in a prior year CIP, and the specific funding is related to the outcome of a settlement that the prosecutor.
They can't hear you, so.
The, this funding that we're requesting is, it's related to that project that was already constructed. Reason it wasn't in the CIP, there was some, an ongoing court case that was handled by the Prosecutor's Office. So this funding is to satisfy the judgment to pay for the property. At the time we put the CIP together, we didn't know if that would be settled last year, this year, even two thousand twenty-three. So that's, that's the reason, and the prosecutor might have something to add, I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
I have a question. Is this the Martha Basin project? Is that what this is?
It is the same.
Oh, it is.
Project.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt item seven.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So let's move forward under our consent agenda items. Items eight through twenty, which are inclusive of several items, I won't go through all of them, but a cell tower replacement for the air conditioning and at the Hamilton County Communication Center. We're asking for a bid for road paint. The county engineer is asking for two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Also, compensation of the law library and job and family services staff and a correcting payment from the health and hospital levy for five million, three hundred and forty-two thousand. And then there are several JFS items which deal with services, residential treatment, parenting, education services, foster care. There are three of them under foster care. And also, lastly, we have the Treasurer's Monthly Investment Report. So I will open it up for any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items. Vice President Reese. Okay, Commissioner Drehouse. So I'd like to make a motion to approve items eight through twenty.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. You have the four-year executive session. I will make a motion.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Before you make a motion, and I apologize, I didn't say this earlier, but there is a youth job fair this Saturday at Duke Energy Center that the city is sponsoring. I know that we have a new youth office that we're going to have and employment opportunities as well. Look forward to hopefully having that presented at one of our staff meetings, but didn't want any youth to miss out on that at Duke Energy Center this Saturday. So, thank you.
What time is it?
Starts at ten a.m.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, did you have?
I have nothing.
Like to make, that's okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section one-two-one-point-twenty-two-G-four regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.